Item three, security services, new RFP draft, PSC contract termination. Ms. Urchak.
There we go. Whoops. This thing is just moving on its own. Thank you. So this is regarding the security guard services, RFP. How do I, how do, all right. Will it go back? Okay. We're doing it as an RFP, not an ITB, an RFP request for proposals, not an invitation to bid in ITB. And that's what has been done for all of the solicitations for security guard services in at least the last 10 years. The reason being that price alone is not the factor. We're always looking to see what the experience was, if the firm is able to provide similar experience. They understand the various needs of the city and the ability of really close participation with the, and dealing with the public and also communication protocols. So, the, and, the, the last two, the, before the most recent ones, we've always combined the stationary and the roving security services together. And this last, the solicitation that was canceled was actually put out. It wasn't put out as you could pick whatever you wanted to provide, which is what we've heard some rumors are. But there was put out as one to provide roving services and one to provide like the stationary security guard services, which staff at the time thought may be a way that made, made sense. I don't think that was thoroughly vetted through and once people took a look at it. That was one of the reasons to, that it was canceled. So, we now have a new draft of the RFP. It was prepared by procurement and reviewed by the city attorney's office and city administration. We've got input from all the departments again, we have CRA input and DDA input. So the scope of services combines the scopes from the previous issued assigned and roving. So we would have one security firm for the city who do both assigned, you know, stationary at the city hall entrance or the water treatment plants or ECR board and also roving through various, the parks, the garages and various other facilities. We've combined them, again, it, we want to ensure consistent protocols and procedures for security throughout the city, so it's the same. We want singular appearance, one uniform. So if the public is at a park or at a city garage, they're looking at the same person. They know it's, it's city security, they look the same. We want one point of contact and command, seamless communication among our security personnel, and efficient contract administration and invoicing. So we've got, you know, one contract to administer. So we have the assigned security guard services, the roving in Northwood Village, the city parks. We, the city has determined that this ambassador type service, we've required this before in our past RFPs, that this is important, that we have guards that are trained to know how to deal appropriately with all members of the public and that there's efficient communication, not only internally, but with our police department, with this, whatever security firm for the DDA and the Rosemary Square security. So these are all important criteria for the scope of services for the RFP. The RFP will include equal opportunity minimum requirements. There's first a small business requirement of 15% of the total contract value. There'll also be a MWBE requirement for a subcontractor that up to 9.92% of the total contract value to be awarded to an African-American MWBE firm. I, I want to just explain a little bit further in our, this was not in our, the solicitations that were issued and recalled. And part of that was, the disparity study talks about professional services. Under Florida law, professional services is really limited to architects, engineering, landscape architects and mappers and surveyors. But we, we went back and parsed through the disparity study and looked at what Dr. Ramsey's analysis. And, and in there, there was some discussion about using the term professional services more as the general public knows it as you need a special license, you've got special education to do this. So the city attorney and the procurement official talked to Dr. Ramsey and asked, does her disparity study and her analysis, would it support a broader view of professional services? And she went back and looked at it and agreed, she will provide us that. We've asked her to provide us that in writing, but she agreed. She looked at her analysis and had incorporated what people, she didn't look, look at it in terms of exactly how Florida law looks at what we call professional services, but looked at it in the broader sense. So she believes that yes, this will, this will allow, her disparity study analysis allows us to apply it in a broader sense. So, our code at this point, although our code was meant to mirror precisely the disparity study, it, we, the definition, we defined it to match the definition in state statutes for professional services. So in order to utilize this MWBE subcontractor for these other types of professional, non-CCNA services, we need to amend our ordinance. So at agenda review, we will have an addition to the agenda for December 2nd to have an ordinance that will amend our procurement code in our MWBE program to have a broader definition of professional services. And so that, that'll be brought to first and second reading, so that ordinance could be in place prior to the proposals being submitted. So that will, we'll have that in place and we'll have a broader definition and be able to utilize the MWBEs for this solicitation. Now, if both, if, if a firm is both a small business and an MWBE, it can be used to meet both requirements. And at this point, the RFP is very strict in terms that failure to meet both of those requirements would result in disqualification and not, not having the proposal considered. One of the other questions that have sort of been bounced around is, should we include in a minimum pay scale? We do not have that in there, but we're bringing this question to the commission for their comments and weigh-in. With both sides of, some say, yes, we should have a minimum pay scale, meaning that we require the contractors to pay a minimum hourly rate so that we know that they're getting, you know, so that they're getting paid a certain living wage. Some of the contractors say that results in more qualified officers and less turnover. We've heard other sides that says sometimes that limits participation of small businesses and the MWBE firms. We've done a survey, now this is the billing rate survey, this is not what the employees are actually paid, but that's a survey of what the state contractors, the Palm Beach County contractors and the last two city contracts, what their, what their billing rate for security services were.
How does that compare to what the contractors actually paid?
We don't know for sure because we don't have, know exactly what it is, but what the people who are saying that we should have a minimum wage, requirement say that we should be requiring them to pay a minimum of 15, $14 an hour for their employees.
I thought we had an ordinance that we passed which required contractors doing business with the city to pay 15.
It applies to construction contracts, but not these type of service contracts. So this is one of the questions to the commission is whether we want to set a minimum, or require a minimum wage be paid to security officers and if so, what that, what that amount is. Numbers people are tossing around are $14 an hour. Based on the survey, it looks like some of them may be, may be paying that because they're billing over that several not. Now, the state contracts are coming up for renewal next year, these are a little bit older. We don't know, we've asked the state whether they're going to do something like that. They haven't made that determination yet, but these rates are, these billing rates are probably going to go up. So that's a little bit, it's a little bit older data, so it's a little bit, you know, skewed in terms of, of what we're looking at. The selection process, procurement's going to, they'll receive them and qualify the firm so that anybody who doesn't meet all the requirements, including the SB and the MWBE, will be disqualified and not be considered further. An evaluation committee will review and rank those qualified proposals and determine the top three. We'll bring the top three to the city commission for presentations and selection of the, of the award by the city commission. The proposed timeline is to, and this is a timeline that is tight, but we think realistic. We may be able to gain some time and, and make this a little bit shorter, but this is still a tight schedule. Advertising, December 2nd. The RFP would be due January 10th. That is an extra week due to the holidays, but if we don't ask for it now, the contractor's going to request it and our schedule is just going to get pushed back anyway, so we'll just start out being real, realistic. Hoping then that, giving the selection committee two weeks to look at the proposals, that they're able to do the ranking no later than the February 7th. That we'll have February 24th, the presentations to the city commission and selection. Contract negotiations, this will be a little bit more, these, the negotiations, we're, it, will take a little bit more time because we are not, for security reasons, spilling out a really detailed scope of what, on the security protocols we want in every single area for every single department. So once we sit down, this is what we're going to have to explain to the proposer, then work out what that looks like in terms of their hourly rate, compare our budget, weigh the services and kind of negotiate that to come to a, on a department level, to come to a meet, a happy medium for the department director. So that will take a little bit of time. We, we hope to have that complete by early April, be able to give a 38 termination notice to the existing contractor if that's applicable, but at any rate have the contract effective on or before May 11th. So that's the planned schedule. So, next steps, we're looking for direction from the commission and then we can, we'll be able to advertise the RFP.
Before we move ahead, I want you to go back to your very first slide, which talked about the termination of the prior RFP. Elaborate on the rationale.
On why, on those, why those two were canceled.
Right, 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 because there's obviously rumors out there that that was terminated to accommodate a certain vendor and that was not true. So please, go back to that slide and elaborate again on why that other RFP was terminated.
The, the, the RFPs were put out as two RFPs. One for.
There we go. 207 and 208.
Yes, so 207 was for stationary security guard services and 208 for roving security services. It, it was, it was put out and we first, we even first started getting some inquiries from the security firms on whether and why this was being done this way. And I don't think this was vetted all the way up the, the levels either. We did get a new police chief then who was starting to look at the, our securities and issues. And there had already been some questions raised about communications and the different vendors downtown and who's responsible for different areas because there was some areas that everybody's saying, that's not my area to, that's your area. And we had, we had some communication problems. This was out, we took a look at what was put out and realized it was going to add to the confusion and add to the issues. And it really came down to needing a, a consistent communication within the city in terms of security. So, the RFPs were, were canceled for that reason, so we could go back and take a better comprehensive look at the scope, the communications and have security as a whole would be handled for the city. It's also part of, I mean, the city in general has been trying to take all cities, all services that are citywide and bring them into a one master contract instead of having each department having different contracts or random. So we're trying to both gain efficiencies and economies of scale by bringing these thing, master contracts in and, and breaking the, the security contract up into pieces just went against that and didn't make any sense. So that was also part of the reason to, to bring it in, relook at it and do it as one comprehensive cohesive procurement.
All right, thank you. So what direction do you need from this body then?
I think the.
What questions?
The real outstanding question is whether a minimum wage rate is something that the commission wants to see.
Commissioners, any thoughts on that? I, I would like to see it as close to the $15 per hour as possible. I don't know what that does in terms of the cost that we're paying, but I think the statement that we're making to the public is that we want, that we're not talking out of both sides of our mouth. And if we are committed to paying a living wage, which I think the term is, then we need to be consistent and maybe come up with a, a plan like we did with construction contracts of getting there eventually. But I, I'd like to see it, a minimum wage and it's close to the, no less than $14 if, if possible.
I mean.
My view.
I, I'll just add that the Giddens contract was, the billing rate was 16.28, which I believe then their payment to their employees was close to the $14 level. And I think our budget was sort of based on that around a 16.28 billing rate. So, that I think is going to impact, you know, that's where I think it'll be budget-wise. I mean, now that's up to the commission, that's just information for your consideration.
Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we were to go this route, I certainly would be for having, you know, a minimal, a minimum hourly rate set. But if we're looking at making a minimum hourly rate in that $15 range, you know, the, the billing rate is going to be closer to the $20 range. And I think if we're looking at those numbers closer to the $20 range, I think we should be taking a step back then and saying, would we be better served, would our citizens be better served by utilizing that money in support of our police department and actually having police officers patrol these areas that we have, you know, farmed out to private security? When you're getting, you know, a police officer obviously is going to be more expensive than 20 an hour, but the closer you get to that $20 figure, now we're, we're getting closer to the cost of a, of a police officer. And I think we all could agree that there are significant advantages to having a police officer patrolling these areas, assuming that we can put them in place in the same numbers that we put private security guards. But there's significant advantages to having a police officer as opposed to a private security guard. And I think it's just something that, that deserves some discussion.
Let's look at the numbers. Commissioner Shou.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the discussion of having a, a minimum pay scale, it would be in support of, of making sure that anybody who's working for the city contractor or not is being paid a living wage. One of the other things I wanted to touch on, if I may, is we, we talked about in this RFP being an RFP versus an invitation to bid. And one of the things that, that I have always been focused on, that this contract has been important, is the security of Northwood Village as it affects District 1 significantly. Service level has a lot to do with that. And so if we're looking at things from an RFP perspective versus at least having some qualifications in there as far as service, every neighbor in the Northwood area can give you a story of previous security firms that have underperformed. I've debated for a while about, about sharing this publicly, but this is just one of, one of personal stories under previous security that I experienced living on a commercial alley in that we had a security guard that directly outside the alley of my home has a touch point, so they have to touch in every hour. And I had some plumbing issues in my house of which the water shut off is only in the alley. So, I had a morning where I woke up and water was pouring into my back bathroom over my electrical panel. So I ran out to the alley, tried desperately with a wrench to try to shut off my water. And during that time, the previous security firm's security guard came up, walked past me on my hands and knees trying to shut off my water to hit the touch point and go back to his car. And so if anything looked out of place in that neighborhood, it would have been me in the alley on that morning. And when there was nothing said during that time, that was really a key indicator for me. And just the way that story is, there's a number of stories of missed opportunities for security to step in. I need a security company that's going to look at things that look out of place and address them. And so do all of the merchants within Northwood Village, so does everyone in the city of West Palm Beach. So when we're looking at sending out this RFP, which I'm certainly in support of, I want to make sure that when we are getting a security firm, that it's addressing more than just a pay scale, it's addressing a service level. So what do we have in here that helps us make sure that we're not just looking at price, that we're looking at who can perform?
Well, that is the, the reason why the proposal and part of what they're, and we do explain that that is what we're looking for, so that they're going to look for things out of, out of place and report and deal with them. And that is in black and white in the proposal now. And what we're asking them to do is really provide us a plan that shows their understanding of what the needs of the city, of the city are. And that, at least that will get them through the first cut. The top ones will be coming for a further presentation and discussion amongst the commission while you'll be able to inquire of them whatever your, your concerns are to make sure that you are comfortable with the firm.
And if I may, Mayor, just a follow-up.
Yes, yes.
We indicated that there's going to be an evaluation committee that precedes proposals coming to the commission. Who, who will select that evaluation committee?
Well, the, the procurement code says either the procurement official or the mayor determines the evaluation committee.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. And to the point about establishing a minimum wage, I am also in favor. I do feel like I need a little bit more information. I am confused on the, it looks like, as, as these numbers are shown, a big difference between the last two West Palm Beach contracts. And so I'd like more information on how much each of the security guards were paid and why the discrepancy here. As far as the service and the selection, do you mind going back to the slide where you talk about the selection committee? And while you're doing that, I just, so, so are we saying that the commission is not the selection committee?
No, the commission is the selection committee.
Okay.
The final selection.
Okay, thank you. And as has been in place for other selection processes that this body has sat and reviewed, we've had a rubric, will, and to Commissioner Shou's point about qualifications, will we have that again? How, what will be our criteria for selecting the, the new contract?
There is, I mean, yes, we will, we will, staff will, will look through and set out sort of detail the, the proposals for the commission so to make it easier for your review. There is evaluation factors in the RFP with points. They basically go to the, the things that we've discussed here. Do they have the ambassador type service? Do they really have an understanding of what the city needs? It, it does look at pricing, but it, it looks at the, the factors that we've, you know, that we've asked for. And we've asked them to tell us what equipment and other things, more details of that. But yes, we would, we would certainly provide the proposals and a summary to commission to enable your, your review.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. So I think we all can agree that this is not, this RFP is not business as usual and that I think, at least for me, the way that I will proceed is with, with an abundance of caution throughout everything. So, one of the things that I would suggest is that we look at perhaps the top five that is coming back to us in terms of evaluation committee versus three. I think the broader, that evaluation process, the better. So that, that's one suggestion that I, I would offer up. The other question I have for you is, you talked about the contracted rate and there were two in particular, the last two on that slide, 16.28 and $12 per hour. What do you have, what were the overall budgets? Because that can, I mean, I appreciate that and this is helpful, but if one of those contracts was $4 million and the other was $1 million, then that means to me that just someone is perhaps paying their employees a lot more for less employees. So I, it's, it's hard for me to wrap my arms around what this really means. Do you, do you have that information?
I, I do not have that information.
You see where I'm going with that?
Yes.
Okay.
You also have to look at the dates of the contracts too, right? Some of those contracts are older than others.
Yeah.
Well, the two, I, I had only referred to the two in particular. One is one that I think was just canceled and the, and the one that was brought on. Those two were the ones that I was really, because they're West Palm Beach contracts. So that, that was really my question around that. And then the other piece, only because, you know, it was brought up and I think it's, it's a valid question. You know, we talked about why the two initial contracts were canceled and some of that had to do with the equal opportunity piece. It was the, the roving versus stationary and, and I can appreciate all of that. Could you speak to then, and I'm, I, I am glad we are to this point in which that we are putting out an RFP. Can you speak to why, and again, because this was brought up, we canceled those contracts? Why, why we didn't get here sooner to this, to this point? I think it's a fair question, given that, that we're talking about why the contracts were canceled in the first place. Does that make sense, the question or no? I'll try and rephrase it if it doesn't.
Why the RFPs were canceled or why the contract?
No, so we, we, so we canceled contracts and we canceled RFPs, RFPs. So we canceled those and you talked about why we canceled them. Then it feels like we, we jumped and we approved that, but we jumped. We jumped from canceling contracts, canceling RFPs to providing it to a sole source. But we're here now in terms of this RFP process. I, I'm just curious from your perspective of, once we canceled those RFPs, was there any discussion around, you know, getting to this point that we are today, but maybe a month ago or two months ago?
Well, yes, the, I mean, since that time, there was a whole discussion in terms of the issues that were raised. There was back with the departments to determine what their real needs were. And then coordinating, putting those two back together, the roving and what was broken out, so putting it back together, again, going back to the departments because there was some conflicts and issues. And then just waiting for this meeting to be scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, I, I have a real basic question. In preparing the RFP for this security contract, obviously, security is a specialty of some sort. Did anyone in procurement ask a security professional to assist them with preparing the RFP?
In terms of other security firms or contractors, everybody wants the opportunity to participate. So if they were, if they contributed to preparation of the RFP, they would be disqualified from participating. And so the firms and entities that we're familiar with want to be able to submit a proposal. So there hasn't been further outside. I mean, we've received comments, we, we've been contacted by, you know, procurement's gotten some comments from contractors, informal, unofficially, but did we take the draft and give it to someone to review thoroughly? No, because they all want to be, have the opportunity to participate.
Every security professional in America wanted an opportunity to participate.
The local ones here, did we go out and look for, to hire another specialist? No. But the, the people that we're familiar with here, they want to, they want to be able to participate.
Any other questions? Did you get guidance on all the issues that you needed to hear from us on?
I think so. My understanding is that the commission wants some level of a minimum wage in the RFP.
Yeah, Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we've been talking about this RFP, but if we could take a step back and talk about the potential liability that we could incur with canceling the current. about the potential liability that we could incur with canceling the current contract that we're in, you know, we've already got a lawsuit against the city by the prior contractor. Are we going to be facing a lawsuit by this contractor? Also, what are, what's our liability, the potential liability to the city?
Well, as you, you saw in your packet that the contract allows a 30-day termination with or without cause on 30 days' notice. The, there is a provision in Exhibit A that, on the contract, that talks about how they're renting certain equipment under 36-month lease, and if we cancel within that 36 months, the city would be responsible. That's, that's the facts that we know. We know that a representative was at a podium speaking about, about this matter in public comment, and threw out that, oh, there's already $200,000 in expenses to the city. That's a comment, made a public comment. I don't have any documentation, I don't know anything further than that. I think that's something that we'd have to look at, see if that's real, negotiate that, see if that's, if that's really an issue or not. So I don't have a complete answer to that. We certainly can cancel the contract, and what, if any costs, I mean, I don't know if they went out after knowing that, I don't know at what point in time they hired this, you know, ordered the equipment. Was it after they knew that we were possibly terminating? I don't, you know, I don't know. There's still a whole lot of facts that will need to be gathered there once, once we do that.
Yes.
Just a quick follow-up. Yeah, I just, I just wasn't clear with the wording, because it's not really very specific when it says either party may cancel service agreement within 30 days written notice to the other party. Equipment costs are based on a 36-month agreement. I assume that they're talking about the 36-month agreement with the city, that they're kind of amateurizing it, or saying that they purchased this equipment based upon the expect, expectation of payments over 36 months. And then it says if contract is terminated by the client prior to the completion of the 36 months, then client agrees to pay the remaining amount due for the 36-month period. Are they talking about the full contract amount over the 36 amount, 36 months? Or are they talking about their equipment costs that if they can produce leases or, or something? It seems to me it's fairly vague that they could argue potentially that they expended a certain amount of money in expectation of having the contract for 36 months, and that because of that, they expect to be paid for the 36 months.
It is somewhat vague, vague. The contract document itself, you know, says they're going to get paid per what's in the contract. This is, their exhibit attached is their exhibit, it wasn't prepared by the city, and it has this information in it that's vague. We read it as, at worst case, that they're claiming the full contract value for any equipment that's being leased to serve the contract. But again, have not had discussions with them, I can't tell you exactly what, how they're going to interpret that. But it is an issue.
And I could follow up again, Mayor.
Yes.
I assume that this exhibit was incorporated by reference in their main contract, though.
Yeah.
So it is a part of the contract?
It is a part of the contract.
Okay, and, and it, I mean, just reading the, the part, the client agrees to pay the remaining amount due for the 36-month period. We're not a party to any leases that they would have had that are private leases, or finance agreements that they would have. So I think that there's a valid argument that they could make, that the 36 months refer to the contract term with us, and that we could potentially be liable for paying their entire 36-month contract term. And if that's the case, then, you know, if we're doing all this in the effort to be transparent with our constituents and making sure this is done in the correct manner, I mean, if we're going to be incurring a liability of a 36-month, you know, contract with a security company that will no longer be performing, and then we're going to be paying twice for another provider, I certainly think we need to at least have City Attorney's Office take a look at that very carefully and make sure that we haven't incurred that kind of liability.
We, we will. The rules for government are a little bit different, even just to, just to tell you that we actually are only ever, ever are on the hook, so for one year's your budget, we budget on an annual basis. So anything beyond a budgeted year is executory only in nature of terms of a contract. So we couldn't possibly be held for 30, 36 months of, of costs. So there are, there are some special rules for government contracts, so, but we definitely will look thoroughly at all of the potential issues.
Commissioner Neary.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an important item, but I, I do want to make sure that we button up the, the first piece before we move on, is that okay?
Sure.
In terms of the follow-up, because you had given one, and then I think it's a very important point, but then we went right to the, I think, the second part of maybe this presentation. So one of the things that I had asked, and again, obviously it's up to the Mayor and Commission, but that we look at five proposals being brought to us as opposed to three. And, and the other thing that I, I had asked for, if, if you could provide to me, specific to the West Palm Beach contracts, the 16, 28, and 12 dollars, what is the total contracts based on that, based on, on those figures? Those were my two that I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? I would thank you for this presentation. You have sufficient information, you believe, to move forward with, for an RFP. Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. I don't have anything else under Mayor's Matters.
Excuse me, Mayor, the last part of this is actually a discussion on the termination of PSC's contract, and I think you all started that and didn't have a complete discussion.
I'm sorry if I jumped forward.
No, that's fine. I mean, what, what's the issue there?
Well, we need, I, I believe maybe more than one commissioner asked to have a work session discussion on it, so we're looking for you to engage in that discussion and give the staff direction on whether or not we are keeping this contract in place, or the direction is to execute the 30-day termination provision in the contract.
No, my, we're going to keep the contract in place until we complete the RFP. It's, and, and, and identify another provider, but I'm not going to have the city without a security contract in place. Commissioner Neary.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I just want to put, you know, kind of my opinion on this on record. You know, I think, you know, we are, we've gone back and we've issued an RFP, and I think I've been overstated in that hindsight's 2020, but, you know, wish we could have, or I could have voted from day one that, that we, we do that, but the fact of the matter is, that is where we are today. Had we done that a month and a half, two months ago, what's clear to me is that entities would have stayed in place, and so what we would be talking about is a vetted process and then identifying a single source. And so my recommendation would be that we, we go back and we make whole prior to awarding the no-bid contract, the, the providers for security. And I say that with, with an understanding that I realize I've received several emails, and I've seen firsthand that the current security provider is performing. There, there is no, no doubt around that, and I, and I can appreciate the emails that I've received. It's one of the reasons why I've asked for the total budget, because if, if there are 10 security men or women out on the street versus a provider that was budgeted for four, of course there's going to be a difference. And so, once again, I'd like to have all of the information, all of the facts, in order to kind of move forward, but out of an abundance of caution, it would be my recommendation that we do in fact invoke the 30, 30-day clause, you know, within our contract, and, and go back to the way that it was prior to the no-bid security contract, knowing that at this point, the goal is to have, I think at some point in May of 2020, a sole provider in place.
So you're saying that we kind of pretend this never happened and go back to Giddens? Is that your suggestion?
Definitely not pretending, because I, I've lived this, so definitely not pretending. What I'm saying is, had we done it right the first time, and that's, that's my word, right, we wouldn't be in this situation, and I wouldn't have to make this comment around going back to Giddens. And, and I hate that I have, for me, it's not about a Giddens versus a PSC. I mean, again, and I think that's where I, I feel bad for especially our residents in the north end, because the emails that I've received has really been around the quality of their service, and I appreciate that, and I, and I'm not here to, to, to say anything different, but as I said, and have always stated from this day, is there is a process to it, and that's what I'm being held accountable for, the process, and ensuring that the process is done in a, in a transparent and, and correct way. So, so definitely not a, a pretend for me, and I don't take, I don't take making this comment lightly. I mean, I realize that there are jobs at stake, as there were when we awarded the no-bid contract. I realize that we have a security provider in place who by all accounts is doing a phenomenal job on the north end of the city, or maybe throughout, but specifically in the north end, I've heard very good things about that provider. But again, I, I don't have all the facts, and so, you know, that's why I asked the budget question, because if there are 10 patrols versus four patrols, then I would imagine that that's why you've noticed a, a, a big difference, but I don't know that to be the case. So I just wanted to make sure that I put on record how I feel about this, and that's my comment.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, and, and certainly respectfully, I acknowledge Commissioner Neary and, and his feelings towards this matter. Having more patrols on the street isn't going to stop somebody from not stopping to see that someone is in distress. Having more security on the street is not going to stop me walking with my seven-year-old niece over to art night out at a time when more people are coming to the north end than would typically be, and there is a homeless man exposing himself so much that I have to take a, a turn down an alley to avoid that. There are key things that are happening here in the north end, and I know there are a lot of political things at play, but I have received emails from the Northwood Merchants' Board, Oliver Olivier Patonk, John from This Is It, Will and Matt from Day by Day, Pete from Papino's, Mohammed from Tina's Grocery, Ingo from Stone Button, both owners at Urban Earth, Peter at Old Metal Classics, a number of residents. I can't turn back the hands of time, and i- if I could, I would have had more information than I do today, but I am vehemently against going back to the security that we had. Very much in support of having the process going forward to be open, transparent, and fair, but I'm speaking from a very passionate place of representing District One and saying that things have vastly improved there, and the merchants are the people who are going to be affected. These are people who, their livelihoods depend on that area being safe and secure, and, and for them, I'm supportive of moving forward, keeping the people who are doing a good job in place, and looking at this process going forward and moving ahead to the future to see how we can better make a fair and transparent process.
Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. And while I agree in theory with, with Commissioner Neary, I have to concur with Commissioner Shof. The people in the Northwood area feel safe right now, and they haven't felt that in some time, at least prior to the award of this no-bid contract. So I think that we have to move cautiously, and, and I've heard the same thing from, from the constituents in that area, that, that they are very much opposed to ending the contract immediately with PSC. They want those security guards at least kept in place until we can identify the winning person, you know, pursuant to the request for proposals. I heard Commissioner Neary make a comment of, of making, making whole, or making the, the prior contractor whole, something to that effect, and maybe I misheard him, but we have to remember that, that the prior contractor was in the process of reaching the natural expiration of their contract. It wasn't that we ended their contract early, their contract was expiring, and all we did was tell them that we weren't renewing it.
It expired, they were operating on a month-to-month.
Expired, right, exactly. So I don't know that there's any being made whole that needs to be done, because they had already fulfilled the terms of the contract, and we had already fulfilled our obligation under that contract. But I, I strongly agree with Commissioner Shof that we have to make sure that public safety is our number-one concern, and make sure that our citizens are never left unprotected.
Commissioner Neary.
And I appreciate the, the passion and the comments. I want to be super clear about something. Definitely not in support of leaving our residents or businesses out to dry. I think the, the passion in terms of where we are now and how we got here should be directed at one place, and that, that's the administration. That, that's, the administration brought forth a no-bid contract, and this commission approved it, and at least I can speak for myself, with probably a third of the information needed. And, and there's an African proverb that says, "When the elephants fight, the grass suffers." And, and I realize that, again, I'd much rather be talking about something different on a Monday morning versus canceling a contract, but out of, out of an abundance of caution for me, and, and again, I want to be clear about this, in the process, it is really why I'm making this comment. I have no horse in the race. I, whether it's Giddens or PCS, or if it was another security contract, my whole point is we, I made a mistake in terms of the initial vote on this, and, and wish I had been more outspoken regarding that. Can't go back, can't change that. We have put out an RFP, and at this point, the calendar reads May, and we know how the things work in, in city government, so if it says May there, you know, maybe August of 2020. And let's not pretend that this current service provider and their leadership isn't embroiled in a, in a, in a major issue within our city. So there, there are many variables to this. I don't, I don't sit here and make this comment flippantly. I, I, I'm doing it again out of an abundance of caution, but respect, but totally respect the opinion of my fellow commissioners, and I, I am but one, one voice, and will obviously support whatever direction we move. So I, I really want you to hear me on that. Whatever direction we move, of course I will support it, but I also want, wanted to make clear where I stand on it.
Madam President, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that it is, I mean, we're dealing with an issue of security and safety, and I don't think any of us wish that we were debating and discussing this topic here today or for the last month as we have been. So I think we can all agree upon, if we had to do it all over again, the process would be different, because we all certainly know more facts now than we knew at the time. We did, however, all vote 5-0 in favor of this company, and we are hearing, I think, a number of the residents and business owners who Commissioner Shof mentioned, we've all heard from as well. I think that in, in ensuring that there is not a lapse in the safety and security of our residents, that we need to move as quickly as possible with the RFP process. We have seen, yes, some things that take a long time in government, but we've also seen things stay on target, and I would make the request to staff that we do everything that we can, not only to meet, but if possible, because I heard there were, might be some areas for efficiencies to beat that May 2020 deadline, because I, I do hear you, Commissioner Neary, and I do think that there are some other issues at play here. And is this 100% the way that we would have done it? Heck, no. But I think that we're, we're playing with the cards that were dealt right now.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Neary on the process. I, I too regret the, the decision to vote for a 5, 5-0 vote, awarding the contract based on insufficient information. I likewise understand the need for security in Northwood, and I've received the very same emails from the residents and from, and from the businesses there. I, I'm a person that believes in process, and the process has been frustrated in this instance, and I understand that... And I understand that in competing interests between the citizens and their safety and us standing firm on process, it's a very tough decision to make. And I don't make it without a lot of deliberation. But, you know, I do believe that we... It's obvious that the current provider is going to be there until May. I would ask that city staff, with all deliberate speed, and that's from the Brown v. Board of Education case. It took them 20 years in order to get integration in Palm Beach after Brown v. Board of Education. So I hope it doesn't take us 20 years to get this RFP on the street. And we need to move with all deliberate speed.
While I appreciate the input of the commission, I will remind you that this is a contract that is valid, that's been approved by the process. There was a process that was followed. I too, if I'd had the information before bringing it to you, I wouldn't have brought it to you. Be that as it may. And if administration is at fault, certainly, I have big shoulders. But be that as it may, the contract is in place. Now that the contract is in place, while I appreciate your comments as a commission, you really have no say as to whether that contract will be terminated. That is part of the administrative, the administration's, the strong mayor's executive powers. And so we cannot have a precedent where the commission is going to vote to terminate a contract that has been validly approved. Otherwise, every contract the city enters into would be subject to the subsequent decision of a commission. That's not the way our charter is structured. So I appreciate hearing everyone's comments and everything. But never let it, I don't want you to doubt in any way that you were veering outside of the legislative into the executive lane, which is a lane that the strong mayor occupies solely. And so as the exercise of my executive authority, I was not going to allow a commission vote to terminate that contract. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that clarification. Why did we put it on the agenda to even have a discussion?
I didn't put it on there, somebody requested it.
Yeah, I will take responsibility for putting it on the agenda for a discussion based on a request I think we heard in different meetings. A number of commissioners asked to have this for a work session discussion. And so if I overstepped administrative bounds with putting this on for a discussion, it was in that vein, based on the requests and comments from several commissioners that you all wanted to have a discussion regarding the termination of the PSC contract. And I think when I sent out the email listing the various items that different commissioners had requested to be workshopped, agended, it was in that perspective that this one, given it has some degree of urgency and priority, it was agenda for today's work session.
And I appreciate that. I guess I would have been helpful to have that preamble prior to the conversation. But it's all good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a comment about that. And I think that we all want to be very respectful of the legislative and executive roles of this body and administration. I think that, at least when I saw this on the agenda, knowing that there are certain restrictions of what the commissioners, what our role is regarding contracts or not, I think that it was to have a discussion because this is not our typical situation with a contract. And would just hope that in that vein, we would be heard and could have a discussion that this is not typical. And I don't think that, you know, a contract with a PR agency or a contract, you know, that didn't have all of these external factors that this contract has, we would not be having these same discussions.
And we had the discussion. I let you all talk, debate. I saved my comments for the very end. You had clearly articulated your views to the public.